And we're good, Mayor Fort.
Okay, great. Thank you, everyone. If I can get a mover in a second or call the meeting to order, please. Moved by Councilor Peter Kissamaker, second by Councilor Belinda Kissamaker. Be it resolved that we do call this regular meeting of council to order on Wednesday, August 16th, 2023 at 6:00 p.m. Those in favor? And that is carried. And I'll hand it over to Councilor Belinda Kissamaker, please.
The Council of the Corporation of the Township of Hornbein would like to begin by respectfully acknowledging that the land which we gather here today is the treaty nine, nineteen oh five, nineteen oh six territory, the traditional lands of indigenous peoples. As we work towards reconciliation, may we all live with respect on this land and live in peace and friendship with all its diverse peoples.
Thank you, Councilor Kissamaker. We'll continue on to the changes to the agenda. There are, there are none, so we're looking at approving as presented. If I can get a mover in a second or please. Moved by Councilor Drago Stefanik, second by Councilor Kistmaker. Be it resolved that council does hereby approve the agenda as presented, and if there's no objection, we'll continue. Item number five, declaration of key interests and declaration of conflict of interest. I don't have any paperwork on that now, and council, you can do that at any time throughout the meeting that such a situation may arise. The adoption of our regular meeting of council on July 12th, if I can get a mover in a second or please, moved by Councilor Belinda Kissamaker, second by Councilor Ted Schentman. Be it resolved that the Council of the Corporation of the Township of Hornbein does hereby adopt the minutes of the regular meeting of council held on Wednesday, July 12th, 2023, as distributed. Any comment on those minutes? Okay, I'm not seeing any. I'll put them to a vote. Those in favor? And that is carried, none opposed. Okay, moving on, we have open discussion tonight on road maintenance service fees. And we don't have any public attendance, and we don't have anybody online either, I don't believe, correct?
No, we do not.
Okay. Okay, would the Public Works Manager like to speak to his report for council discussion? Yeah, go ahead, Eileen.
Mayor Fort, Dwayne, the Public Works Manager is not at the meeting. Sorry, he's on vacation.
Okay, is there anything that you'd like to add to this report?
I don't have anything to add, but I can try to answer any questions, and if I can't, then I will note the question, and I will have to get the Public Works Manager to advise upon his return.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, I open up the floor to council for questions on the report or comments. Councilor Peter Kissamaker, go ahead.
Reading what the, what Dwayne put down for presentation for the background, as well as the the actual numbers and the cost of maintaining the road, I think it was well done, and it actually reflects the true nature of the cost to the taxpayers of what it's been costing us over the years, actually maintaining these sections of road that are not occupied by taxpayers.
Yeah, exactly. Spells it out pretty clearly. Any further, thank you, Councilor Kissamaker. Any further comments? Councilor Drago Stefanik, go ahead.
Yeah, Mayor, thank you. My opinion is the point issues as follows. Any individual, individuals that are receiving the services for the Corporation Township of Hornbein should pay for the services accordingly. If the service is two hours, three hours, or rated for that service, period. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Stefanik. Any further comments on the report? And then there's a few questions in the report that we need to talk about. So not seeing any at this time. I'm going to go to the discussion questions on page three of the report. And the first one is how to set costing for cottagers. And then there's three different, is it going to be a per time maintenance cost, a per season cost, a per annum cost? Councilor Peter Kissamaker, go ahead.
I would just like to start off by saying I'd like to combine a couple things, or we'll talk, like to discuss combining a couple. Like what Councils Stephen just mentioned, per, per, per time cost of basically hour for hour, because we already have those in the we already have our hourly rate set up for the standard, as well as all the other equipment that we have. And, and for billing, billing the send the bills out, I think the fairest way would have set up like a water bill quarterly, or if you prefer annually, but seasonally, four times a year. And have it set up like water so that we, because there's not going to be one quarter that's going to be the same as the other.
Right, right.
So if there's a total of twenty hours being used from, for in three months, that's what we should, that's what's built.
And further that, though, on that discussion, do we want to get into a position where we're building individual people outside of the township? Other areas that have gotten our assistance in the past, and I'm thinking about the Nagogami Seas Cottage area, they organize together, they have their own association, and then if they need services, they per, they pay and they organize that in the background. Like, I'm not sure if that's some township's requirement to, like, if they want services, the group of cottagers or that area that we're talking outside of this township, I think they need to organize themselves first.
I agree.
And I have no problem entering in a billing system as long as our, the bills are paid before the works performed. Go ahead, Councilor Kissamaker. Peter.
I think it would be hard, difficult to, to bill before it was performed, because every, every, every time that snow will be removed, the graveling, I mean, gray, it's going to be different every time. My recommendation for simplicity is I think they should get an organization, but that's up to them how they do it. It's just that we first got to find out the level of service they would like. Would they like it at the four inches, five inches? It would be, it would be up to them as a group to come to us and say what we want, and then and then we bill quarterly, so after it's done, and then if the bill isn't paid by the time the next ones due, just like with water, the service gets cut off. Because the, the, the terrible thing of the whole situation is, is there's an awful lot of cottagers out there that I'm sure will have no problem paying. And the sad part is, is there's going to be people that don't want to pay, but it's not our business to police it. It's our taxpayers that are paying for that equipment, and the operators to be using it, and there's no recovery for it. And, and the times that we're in right now, we need to recoup some of these costs. And, and, and the service fees that, the, the schedule, the fee schedule that we have up right now, we are not making hardly any money at all, so we're still actually almost doing it at cost with the rates that we have in place already. So I don't want to make it difficult. I think you keep it as simple as possible, and that way it's always as fair as possible, and if there's going to be individuals in the group that don't want to pay, that's up to them to deal with, not us.
Exactly, exactly. Um, I like the idea of having a payment schedule, and then if it's not paid, the last billing, it just, I don't want us to get into a situation where we're, you know, three bills deep and we haven't got paid, and yet we've been getting the service. I just don't want that situation to occur. Any other further comments on, from council for those first four questions of talking about setting the costing? Okay, I'm not seeing any. And then, Peter, you touched on this, you know, to what kind of standard do they want? Is it going to be a call for service when they want the road cleared, they get it cleared? Obviously, it's not going to be maintained to the way it is now unless they're willing to pay the fees that we've calculated. And that would be up to them to decide. Councilor Peter Kissamaker, go ahead, and then I'll come to you, Ted, Councilor Schentman.
And to keep in mind with the way the, with the the weather is changing, and it's very, getting very unpredictable, so you get, so like, I like the, what Council Stefanic said, hour per hour, because there's going to be some winters that are going to cost if they're centered way on the average, you're going to, they may get a winter where they're paying double what we're actually doing, and vice versa, it can go the other way. So this is the most fair and transparent way of doing it.
Okay. I'm in agreement with that. Councilor Schentman, go ahead. Thank you, Peter.
Thank you. I'm in total agreement with that, because if we don't put some parameters around it, they wait until the road's in a real mess, and then we go out, and then all of a sudden, instead of taking two hours, somebody has to spend four and a half hours, and then they say, oh, but you told me it wasn't going to be, so have to be some strict parameters that are laid down. That's my thought anyways. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Schentman. The next question is, who will be responsible for notifying when maintenance is required? So the question follow to this then, for, to council, just on our discussion right now, is if the road does hasn't been maintained for quite some time, it does take staff longer to clear it. Do we want to leave it up to the cottagers groups to decide when, and as long as they're paying, but I'm wondering if we want Dwayne's advice on this as well. Go ahead, Councilor Peter Kissamaker.
I think it should be a hundred percent up to the cottagers, because they're the ones that are actually paying the bill. Maybe some, they'll be fine with, because I know in Hornbein, we're spoiled, our roads are, in the wintertime, our staff keeps roads very in good shape in the winter. I'm not talking about puddles or anything. But there is, I, I drive in sometimes in the city of Suzanne Green, and after snow turns, it's three, four days with six inches of snow, and people don't complain about that, so maybe that's what they want, so. And I know Dwayne was talking about that, at the level of service, that, that, but that will be up to them to decide.
Okay. I, I'm in agreement with that, as long as they understand that they'll be paying more for certain, at certain times, it's going to take longer than having four inches of snow than if it's at eight. So, Councilor Drago Stefanik, you had a comment or a question?
Yeah, just to follow up on yours, I think before any major decisions, I mean, I've got the Public Works Manager here. I'll have some questions to direct to him. I don't have expertise, expertise, I'm sure he also doesn't have those. Because he's going to have to deal with.
Yep.
And I respect that as, as a member of council, I think that's, that would be crucial. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Drago.
Thank you.
And the last question on here is, do we need to post the section of roadway that extends through the township boundary from the last rate prayer on Government Lake Road to the municipal boundary on the non-maintained road within township boundaries? This question for me is a liability question. I'm wondering if we can reach out to find out what our requirements are. So I leave this one. Go ahead, Councilor Peter Kissamaker.
I just, I, when I consider that question, of course, we have to look into it, but we have many roads within our township boundaries that people actually pay taxes and don't get any service. This is, with the, with the question, we're dealing with the government road especially, and as well as Crete, its presence has been set, and we're following it, and for some reason, nobody ever wants to get over that rut that we're in. I mean, I don't see any difference here, the Pompos Trail, it's not being maintained, there's a lot of roads that aren't being maintained, or at different levels of maintenance to them.
Okay, so you're, so are you saying that you don't really think we need signage? Or some sort of posting for that?
Sign. In what, sorry, would, would matter.
Well, it's talking about boundary line, so I, I just assumed we'd put signage at our boundary line, so maybe he wasn't thinking that at all. But I do think we need some sort of policy that says, or it outlines what roads were taken care of. That, I think that would actually fall under the MM, or MMS, the minimum maintenance standards, that these, that they're not taken, that they're not maintained during the wintertime, or maintained at a different level.
Yeah, I understand, yes.
So I am wondering, though, we will have, have some communication with the maybe there needs to be some sort of signage posted so that they understand there's going to be a change of service, that there will be no service unless it's paid for. And I apologize ahead of time to staff, I think the fall, the first couple of snowfalls are going to be taxing on you. Okay, so do we need to, Eileen, are, did I say, did I not speak clearly there? Sorry.
It cut out a bit, so I didn't hear the last little bit that you had mentioned to the staff.
I was just saying that the staff, that, that when this is implemented in the winter, when those first couple of snowfalls come, you could be receiving some phone calls and that, that people are, that aren't informed of what's happening, and it could just be taxing on the staff, that's all I was saying. So do we have anyone join in council chambers from the public that would like to speak to this?
No, we do not.
Okay. I'm going to call the, we've maintained public, that there's been opportunity for public discussion here. I think Drago, Councilor Drago Stefanik is right that we do need to bring this back to council for council discussion with the Public Works Manager to ensure that we're not missing anything or causing any more havoc or undue stress for the staff to implement this. The one question I do have for you, Eileen, is will it be enough time to implement this for this winter coming if we are discussing it in September? Do you first?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
Uh, the, sorry, the treasurer is indicating that it shouldn't be an issue, but I, I think we probably would need also Dwayne's voice for that too, right? And for him to advise, so. Yeah.
Okay, great. I just don't want to come to the head before we've had full discussion, so we can bring it back to a meeting with Dwayne. Councilor Stefanik, I saw that you had wanted to speak.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I think September sixth is the first meeting in September. I think, you know, about forty-five minutes or an hour, we could hammer this thing out, because it hopefully will not snow till mid-October, I mean, as long as before. And I think if we hammer out, say, the sixth, it gives us that one, two, three, four weeks to notify and direct it, you know, what it communicates to the people that are.
Just to project, Councilor Stefanik, it will have to come back to the second meeting in September, because I believe our Public Works Manager is still on vacation at that time, and it might be time to prep for the meeting as well. Eileen, go ahead.
I was just going to ask, yeah, if it could come back to the September twentieth meeting, just because he, he comes back a day before that, and it wouldn't give him any time really to prepare much, yeah.
Go ahead, Eileen. Continue.
Sorry, if I can, if I can ask if the treasurer can speak through the, your meeting?
Yes, definitely. Go ahead.
I'm just wondering if there's some council direction in the meantime to investigate if there is cottager associations, or who would be the contact person, or do, we're just going to leave everything at this?
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, we could definitely, I'm wondering, through the CIO to the treasurer, have we had, because we have been some sort of volunteer payment program, so do we have some contact information with some of the cottagers on each of those roads? Yeah, so I, I'm in agreement with that, that we'll need a, we'll need a single contact, and they'll have to form that to give us a single contact. Is that what you were looking for, Melissa?
Yeah, I was just seeing if we, if there's anything that we can do in the meantime to, if the law rolling, while we wait for.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, and then they know. Okay, and then the final policy consideration, just before we wrap up this discussion, is do we need to create a bylaw for unmaintained section of roadway within the township boundaries? And, um, Councilor Drago Stefanik, go ahead.
I did the hand up, okay.
Oh, sorry. I'm wondering if this is a question that we need to discuss with Dwayne, like, what the background, what his thinking is on creating that? If it would assist him in any way. Does council have any thoughts on that question? Councilor Peter Kissamaker, go ahead.
I agree with what our treasurer said, and as we can also maybe put flyers up or something, just saying like, so more, if the word can get out more, because a lot of the cottagers do have, even though they live out there, they have, they have mailbox on a bank. Would that be helpful, maybe?
What would be notified on that?
Just really like that, this is being discussed going forward, we're, you know, just basically give a a basic idea of what we're doing. So there's, you know, so there's no reason for, because there's always going to be people that are surprised.
Yeah, Councilor Peter Kissamaker, thank you for that. I think that might be a great idea, and then letting them know that we did have public discussion, that we followed the regulations in that, and that the, the services will be changing on those roads. I think we have consensus of council tonight that that needs to happen. Uh, just, I want to check consensus on that before we move it out and put any public notice out. So in that notice, it would read for those, for anyone that has property on those roadways, they would have to contact the municipality for further information, something like that, Peter?
Yeah, I'd do that, and then put it on our website as well, and just, I don't, again, I don't want to artist that with even more work. It's just something simple and trying to not, I don't want to be surprised if anybody's want, it's fair and, and simple as possible. I think everybody's, I think these people out there, I think are in agreement.
Okay, thank you for that, Councilor Kissamaker. I'm going to come to you in just a second, Belinda. I, I want to double check that Drago didn't have his hand up.
No, okay.
Oh, okay. Councilor Belinda Kissamaker.
I just wanted to state, though, the one issue, Dwayne is probably going to have his, where he's going to have his turnarounds for his equipment. That's going to be a big thing, especially on down market road.
Yes.
So that, that should probably be stated.
Okay, well, let's pose that to Dwayne when we talk about this on the twentieth, because then maybe there needs to be the creation of a turnaround in those spots, or something that his equipment can handle, or we might have an ID already on it, right? He's been thinking about this probably longer than we have, so we can pose that question at Dwayne on the twentieth, and Eileen, could you note that for us, that we'd like that answered? Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, if there's no further discussions on this topic, council, you will have opportunity to discuss and ask Dwayne questions on September twentieth as well. Give it some more thought as well as we move forward. If you see any unforeseen, we're trying to find those unforeseen things as we make these changes to minimize the consequences of it. And if there's no further discussion, we will move on. And that wraps up public discussion as well. Okay, so moving on, we have a tender award for a market gap analysis, and does the EDO, Stacy, would you like to speak to your report before I open up for question or comment? Count, uh, councillor, sorry, Eileen, go ahead.
Um, Mayor Fort, sorry, I, I believe the resolution was just missed, for the eight point.
Thank you for that. Let me go back. And I apologize for that. Thank you, Eileen. If I can get a mover in a second, a second or to acknowledge the receipt of the report, moved by your, Councilor Peter Kissamaker, second by Councilor Ted Schentman. Be it resolved that council does hereby acknowledge receipt of the PWD SR twenty twenty-three dash zero three road, we, road maintenance fees as prepared by Dwayne Goodrow, Public Works Manager. Those in favor? And that is carried, none opposed. Okay, now moving on to eight point two. And Stacy, do you have any comments or additions to your report before I open up for council?
No, I don't have anything to add, but I'll add, and Jenny.
Okay, thank you. And I open up the floor now for council questions or comments on the report. I think everything's pretty thorough. Okay, I'm not seeing any questions or comments on that report. If I can get a mover in a second or please. Moved by Councilor Drago Stefanik, second by Councilor Peter Kissamaker. Where is the township issued a request for proposal, RFP, seeking the services of a consultant or a team of consultants to undertake the creation of a market gap analysis for the township of Hornbein? And where is the township received two proposal submissions as follows? FMB Planning Limited from Halifax, Nova Scotia, in the amount of twenty-two thousand fifty-five dollars plus H I, HST, and Stiletto Consulting Limited from Frederick Chin, New Brunswick, in the amount of fifty thousand dollars plus HST. And where is members of the senior management team reviewed and compared the above proposals based on the criteria listed in the attached staff report and have identified the proposal from FBM Planning Limited as the consultant who understand the scope of the project and who will provide the best value to the municipality. Therefore, be it resolved that the Council of the Corporation of the Township of Hornbein does, sorry, upon the recommendation of the senior management team, does hereby accept the tender submission from FBM Planning Limited from Halifax, Nova Scotia, in the amount of twenty-two thousand fifty-five dollars plus HST to undertake the creation of a market gap analysis and authorize the staff to move forward with the project. Hopefully, that doesn't set the tone for every resolution I read tonight, so. Any further questions or comments on that? There being none, I put that to a vote. Those in favor? That is carried, none opposed. Okay, moving on to departmental reports. If I can get a mover in a second or for the, acknowledge the received reports, moved by Councilor Belinda Kissamaker, second by Councilor Ted Schentman. Be it resolved that the Council of the Corporation of the Township of Hornbein does hereby acknowledge receipt of the manager's reports provided at the regular, provided at the regular meeting of council held on Wednesday, August sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. And our first report is the CIO clerk report. Eileen, do you have any comments or additions to your report before I open up for discussion?
Uh, no, I do not, but I can answer any of council's questions.
Okay, thank you. I open up the floor for discussion or questions from council. Councilor Drago Stefanik, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and just a update on the CKA mediation process for the way you're way crossing on the major project. Is there any movement, any positive, negative, anything transpiring?
Uh, nothing negative, but we're, we're close to having, I think, the next meeting with CN, I believe. We're, we're close to actually having that meeting. We're just finalizing things on our end, and sorry, I'm looking to the treasurer, because she's been in the meetings with our municipal lawyer, so we're just finalizing things on our end, and then we'll move forward with. Uh, we're just finalizing things on our end, and then we'll move forward with um, yeah, with CN and the CTA mediator.
Thank you for that, Dave.
Okay, perfect. Any further questions from counsel? Okay, I'm just, I do have one question about the CIP. Will we be getting that earlier as soon as we're it's available to us? We have discussed that at a previous meeting about having the drafts as soon as we could have it to read it over.
Um, I may not refer that question to the uh, EDO if she can speak through me to counsel.
Yeah, for sure.
So counsel wants the draft early, we definitely can provide that.
Okay, great. Counselor Belinda Kistmaker, go ahead.
I was kind of hoping that maybe the housing committee would be able to get a copy of that as well. Is that possible? You know, I'm not sure.
I we can look into it. A draft copy? Oh, yeah, which I think, I think through.
Yeah, if it was, if it's okay, we share that with the house.
I I'm not sure, so I think we'd have to.
After some food? Well, we have that, we have the um comment period from August to September fifth. Would that be early enough? For the public?
Not August, it's September.
Or September?
Yeah.
But or the, too late. We're not sure if we can provide it as a draft.
No.
A lot of drafts.
Okay, yeah, I just want to know. Okay, but, uh, Counselor Kistmaker, it would, that public can see it during that comment period, so HHC would be able to access it then.
Then, okay. All right, thank you.
Which is before that, the meeting will take place before that statutory public uh, meeting.
Okay, so just to clarify on that, the HHC will receive the documents when they're posted. But counsel will receive them ahead of time as soon as they're available for us to see the draft?
Correct, yes.
Okay, great. Okay, is there any further questions or comments for the CAO? Okay, there being none. Thank you, Eileen, for your report. And we'll move on to the next report, which is the public manager's report. Any questions or comments on that report? Eileen, did you need to speak to this before we open it?
No, I don't have anything further to add, but I can try to answer any questions that counsel may have.
Okay, great. Counselor Drago Stefanic, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Thank you. I'm very happy to see on the other, one on the truth page. Once the excavator is finished with the last active cell, will be used to recommend recommenced demolitions. We have to see that. It's very little more sound. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have a date of when that, um, the active cell will be finished? When the exec, uh, excavator will be free to start demolitions?
Uh, I don't have an answer for that. A public works manager would would have to advise on that.
Okay. I also want to, um, I like the item number, our general equipment operator is returned, so welcome back to work. And that we've extended that further contract out, so we have a complement of four. And I really like the pictures of the livable cities pilot project that's begun. I think that's pretty cool. And, uh, I'd like to see the transformation of that arena building that's in that picture and also add more to that pavilion park in coming years. And the speed detectors, that's pretty interesting. So how are we going to get the results of the speed detection?
Um, we have software that we, I believe that we can, we we can access. So the data would be shown through that. I'm not entirely sure. We're still in the middle of being trained and learning and all that stuff, so I don't have a complete answer for that as of yet.
Okay, great. And the noise sensor on Leslie Avenue, I take it that's for the air brake systems that people use?
Sorry, Mayor Ford, I missed that last part.
The noise sensor that's been installed on Leslie Avenue?
Yeah.
I'm assuming, sorry, not air brakes, the Jake brakes that are used on trucks? Is that why that location was chosen?
Our street, oh, sorry, our street is very noisy. It's a good spot.
Yeah, yeah, I was just, yeah.
Yeah, I'm assuming it it's the public works manager, um, probably selected that position and and also the EDO, just because there's the train there and like Counselor Kistmaker said, it's quite a noisy, uh, spot area.
Okay, so is it down closer to the, um, railway crossing or up near the church end of Leslie?
It's it's closer to the railway crossing.
Okay, great. Okay, is there any further questions or comments on that report? Hey, there being none, we'll move on. The EDO report? And would Stacy like to speak to her report before I open up for her comment?
I can I can add a comment. We had our kickoff meeting with the consultants for rebranding today. And that went really well. So we're excited to, they're excited to work with us, we're excited to work with them, so we'll have our next meeting, um, on the thirty first. I think that practice will go very well.
Okay, that's pretty exciting. And that's Cinnamon Toast. I just love their name.
Yeah. We'll never forget it, yes.
Yes, yes, and they're they're located in Ottawa, correct?
They are.
Yeah, do they have a, do they have a, like, an actual, um, business front? Do you know?
Uh, they have two offices. I don't know if they actually have a business front, but it's, uh, Cinnamon Toast Media. So, uh, they have an office in Ottawa and Hamilton, so I'm not sure if they actually have a front.
Okay, I'm wondering if we could, uh, show, I go to Ottawa quite frequently just to visit family, and I'll be there again in September. And that would be a great shout out for the collaboration of doing our, um, rebranding. And give them a shout out on LinkedIn. We can take a picture and just meet them. And I can meet them. If that's possible. The nineteenth, September nineteenth or September twentieth would work. Okay, any other further comments or questions? Counselor Drago Stefanic, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, to the EDO, Stacy. Can you slightly expand staff working on business retention and expansion? Can you deal with that?
So that's, so that's a plan for to keep businesses in town or or drop creation. So we'd start by having a plan with, um, set deliverable, and then we would do, um, public engagement with the businesses in town. So such a planning could be, um, um, courses they need, uh, incentives they need. So it's basically, it's it's a strategic plan for the businesses in town.
Most major entire you right now.
Um, so I have the the bones of it, uh, the plan and the proposal, so I'll probably start a public consultation. I I would hope to start in October, November.
So the businesses do a volunteer on a volunteer basis?
Yeah, so what we start, we start with a survey. We start with a survey, and if there's, um, actual identified need, then we would have one-on-one interviews for a public meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Stefanic. Any further questions from counsel? I have one follow-up question to Counselor Stefanic with the business retention and expansion. Does that talk at all about business licensing? And then, um, prescribing how many businesses of a certain kind we will allow in our community upon population numbers?
So I'm sure could. And maybe that's something that when we're doing the market gap analysis, we have those identified parameters and, um, needs, those can be incorporated into the business attraction and retention, because the business attraction and retention is like the strap line. It's a it's a living document. It's something that we will use all the time and and continually update. When we get the information, extensive information from the market gap, um, that stuff that I'll be incorporated into the business attraction and retention plan. That answer your question?
Yeah, that answers my question. It's just, I know with, uh, just the different, um, courses and stuff that I've taken with business, it's if a business feels protected and they know the growth that might come, there is, um, they can put more investment, just like with our zoning bylaw. If people invest in a property when they know it's in a residential area and you know a business can't open up right next door, there's protection and allowances to those properties. So I was on the same lines of the businesses, right, that we have the sections mapped out for our businesses currently, but then how else do we? Um, and I've seen the numbers in the past where you limit the amount of different services you allow in your community, and then those, um, services, like one, one perfect example is taxi services in the past. Uh, not necessarily in Horn Pain, but in other, um, cities and communities, they don't, they only have so many taxi licenses they allow to operate in their community. And that might be a way that we generate the interest, because if you restrict the 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 need, then people want to buy into those businesses and they know they're protected. So it might be an avenue for growth. And then as your population increases, you can add, uh, you can add more if you, if there's a need. But I'll see what happens with the consultation, so that's exciting. Okay, if there's no further questions, we'll move on. Okay, I'm not seeing any further questions, so if I can put that acknowledge receipt to a vote, those in favor? And that's carried. Okay, moving on to item ten correspondence action items. And, uh, Eileen, would you like to speak to your report?
Um, essentially, I just, uh, acknowledged and addressed the points, um, from the correspondence we received from the CAO of the Horn Pain Community Hospital. Um, and I'm just hoping this kind of clarifies things, um, and I can take any questions from counsel if they have any regarding my report, but, um, I I hope that this kind of is outlined clearly and and easy to follow, and I think it should answer, um, most of the, um, if not all of the points that were made in the CEO's, uh, correspondence.
Well, thank you, Eileen. I think it is a thorough report. I think that the that time was very stressful for not just yourself, but all of staff and the members of the CCG, just trying to get organized and create an evacuation plan for our community. So I open up the floor now. Thank you, Eileen. I open up the floor now for counsel for questions or comment. So I do, I do pose a question to Counselor Ted Scheneman in respect to this initial arising from a discussion we had at counsel. Does this suffice to the understanding of what went, what occurred during that time?
It certainly does to me, Madam Mayor. It certainly does. It's very well done. Thank you, Eileen. It was very well done and to the point, and, uh, it would be hard to deny what it what is there. So I think it should clarify everything. Thank you.
Okay, great. Okay, if I, uh, if there's no further questions, I'll put the motion on the floor and I'll need a mover and a second or please. Moved by Counselor Ted Scheneman, second by Counselor Peter Kistmaker. Be it resolved that the council, the corporation, the township of Horn Pain does hereby acknowledge receipt of CAOS R twenty twenty-three dash ten emergency response plan community control group procedures as prepared by Eileen Singh, the CLO, the CAO clerk. Be it further resolved that counsel does hereby direct the CAO clerk forward this report and its attachment to the attachments to the CEO of the Horn Pain Community Hospital. Any further discussion on that motion? There being none, I put it to a vote. Those in favor? And that is carried, none opposed. Okay, moving on to ten point two is the Crime Stoppers donation request. Thank you, Eileen, for following up with, uh, Crime Stoppers and finding out exactly some more information and what's been happening with the funds. So I'll get a mover and a second or first, and then we can put the motion on the floor and have a discussion. Moved by Counselor Belinda Kistmaker, second by Counselor Drago Stefanic. Whereas Crime Stoppers is a charitable community program which empowers people to make their neighborhoods safe through the anonymous reporting of crimes, and whereas the increased outreach of the program in twenty twenty-two led to a successful year. And whereas the township of Horn Pain has received correspondence from Crime Stoppers of Sioux State Marine and Algoma District requesting a donation of five hundred dollars. And whereas the donation would help boost awareness of the program in the district, which would hopefully lead to more people calling in tips and would also ensure enrollment in the Friends of Crime Stop, Crime Stoppers membership. Therefore, be it resolved that the council, the corporation, the township of Horn Pain does hereby agree to donate five hundred dollars to the Crime Stoppers of Sioux State Marine Algoma District to support their programs and awareness in the district. So I open up the floor now for questions or comments. Counselor Drago Stefanic, go ahead.
Yeah, every year that I'm sitting on council for nine years now, I was, I always supported that. I think, um, there's all volunteers on that board as well, so the money is going directly into the, it's not being used mistreatedly, it's going directly to the program. Um, my number two comment, they usually come to the Public Awareness Day and are reading to a public awareness this year, September fifteenth. I'm not sure if they're aware of that. Uh, so maybe someone can reach out to mine. September fifteenth is the Public Awareness Day at the Legion, that's where various service providers in our community across Northeast Ontario and, and they have their promotion marketing. I think they could, uh, to be in publicizing our community. I think it's be positive, and they could explain to the public, uh, local citizens what they're all about. I think it's a good public image.
Yeah, thank you for that. I I believe they are reaching out to be part of that day, is it not already? Was that not listed in here somewhere?
I've been seeing this.
Sorry, and this is Crime Stoppers reaching out?
Uh, because they were going to increase their, um, their public awareness, because our community wasn't, um, really highlighted in twenty twenty-two. It was Wawa Serpent River, Mississauga First Nation, and that's the one. Oh, sorry, it's the Healthing Aging Expo that they referred to, and it's scheduled for October nineteenth. So, yeah, I think that what Drago's, and thanks for that clarification, so there is a second opportunity for them to give it to our community.
Okay.
And which date was that? Um, September fifteenth, Drago?
Fifteenth, yeah, it's a Friday at the Legion. My standing starts at ten AM. No, it does start at ten, I understand. So they could reach out to Lorraine, if you want to give Lorraine's, uh, email, no problem. She has no problem, but she does market the program, and if you don't have it, I'll message you.
No, I I have her email address, so I'll just.
Okay, great. So you're going to do a invite and, um, connect Lorraine and Susan together? Eileen?
Yes, yes, I can do that.
Great, great. And did you have something else you'd like to speak to?
Uh, no, I was just going to follow up to Counselor Stefanic's request and just say when I, uh, email them tomorrow, I'll just pass over the information to to Susan then.
Okay, great. And then I would like to highlight to counsel that those two opportunities are happening in our community, and if you have the time to, uh, participate or go and say hello, that would be well worth your time. Okay, so moving on, is there any other further con, um, discussion on that item? Ten point two? Okay, there being none, I put that motion to a vote. Those in favor? And that is carried, none opposed. Association of Municipalities of Ontario, Eileen, did you need to speak? Sorry.
Sorry, I didn't notice that the E D O had her. You're, you're okay? Okay, sorry about that, Mayor Ford.
Oh, no, that's all right. That's okay. I'm, I'm looking at three different screens. So please just interject if I'm not responding, please. Okay, the Association of Municipalities of Ontario Property Tax Assessment. They're looking for support to finalize that assessment date. If I can, a seconder, please? Moved by councillor Peter Kistemaker, second by councillor Ted Scheneman. Whereas property tax reassessments were paused due to COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas the ongoing delay in reassessments is compromising the province's economic competitiveness. And whereas a well-functioning and up-to-date assessment system supports strong communities and makes Ontario an attractive place to invest. And whereas leadership from the government on reassessments is critical to supporting the resilient and continued growth of the provincial economy we rely on. Therefore, be it resolved that the council, the corporation, the township of Horn Pain does hereby support the Association of Municipalities of Ontario A M O S request that the Government of Ontario formally commit to a reassessment date. Be it further resolved that this resolution be forwarded to the Honorable Doug Ford Premier of Ontario, Michael Matha, M P P Algoa, Manitoulin, with copy to the Association of Municipalities of Ontario. Is there any discussion on that motion? The only discussion point that I wanted to point out was that in the background information that we received for this, oh, I clicked the wrong one. Just give me a second. It's the second tab. I was, and I, and I wanted to just question our staff to ensure that there would be enough support when this comes through to ensure it can be realized. Is the second letter to the premier's office? I'm assuming this is a support letter from these different organizations, but they're all Toronto-based. They're all not Toronto, they're all Southern Ontario-based. And my concern is, my question through the C A O to the treasurer is, when the assessment date does come out, is, would it be more beneficial if we had a longer understanding when that date? Because I was thinking like if they decide, okay, you know what? We're going to do the reassessments for January 2024. What type of potential havoc could that create our small municipality? Or would it at all?
It would, no, it wouldn't at all. As per the Assessment Act, impact has to do that. And they have to deliver the, return the role to all municipalities at the end of November. So either way, if the assessment date is January 1st, 2024, or if it remains 2016, the date that it gets delivered to our municipality is unchanged.
Okay, but if it's, if the reassessment does happen for 2024 and the projections are that some community or some houses are going to increase substantially in value, we have opportunity to readjust our tax rate before they're hit with a huge tax bill?
Yeah.
Yeah, there would be time for that?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, that was my only concern. Because I was, I tried to reach out to some of our Northern Board members on A M O today to try and get discussion on this to see how it would affect their communities. Because I think there's, we'll have to have a huge discussion on that when it happens, depending on how high our assessment values go up. But thank you for answering those questions, Melissa. And if there's nothing further from council on this, we can put it to a vote. Those in favor? And that's carried, none opposed. Okay, moving on to 10.4. When I read this, I thought the staff must be pleased with South Huron. Anyway, if we can get a mover and a seconder, please? Moved by councillor Drago Stefanik, second by councillor Belinda Kistemaker. Whereas the Municipal Freedom of Information Protection of Privacy Act, R S O 1990, M F I P A dates back 30 years. And whereas municipalities include the Township of Horn Pain practice and continue to promote open and transparent government operations, actively disseminating information and routinely disclose public documents upon request outside of the M F I P A process. And whereas government operations, public expectations, technologies, and legislation surrounding accountability and transparency have dramatically changed and M F I P A has not advanced in the line with these changes. And whereas the creation, storage, and utilization of records has changed significantly. And the municipal clerk of the municipality is responsible for records and information management program as prescribed by the Municipal Act 2001. And whereas Regulation 823 under M F I P A continues to reference antiquated technology and does not adequately provide for cost recovery and these financial spirals are borne by the municipal taxpayer. And whereas the threshold to establish frivolous and/or vasticious requests is unreasonably high and allows for harassment of staff and members of the municipal councils and unreasonably affects the operations of the municipality. And whereas the act fails to recognize how multiple requests from an individual shortage of staff, resources, or the expense of producing a record due to its size, number, or physical location does not allow for time extensions to deliver requests and unreasonably affects the operations of the municipality. Whereas the name of the requester is not permitted to disclose, to be disclosed to anyone other than the person processing the access request. And this anonymity is used by requesters to abuse the M F I P A process and does not align with the spirit of openness and transparency embraced by municipalities. And whereas legal professionals use M F I P A to gain access to information, launch litigation against institution where other remedies exist. And whereas there are limited resources to assist administrators or requesters to navigate the legislation process. And whereas reform is needed to address societal and technological changes in addition to global privacy concerns and consistency across provincial legislation. Therefore, be it resolved that the council, the corporation, the township of Horn Pain does hereby support the municipality of South Huron and the municipality of Chatham-Kent's request that the Ministry of Public and Business Service Directory, M P P S D, review the M F I P A legislation and consider recommendations as follows. That M F I P A assign the municipal clerk or designate to be the head under the act. That M F I P A be updated to address current and emergency, emerging technologies. That M F I P A regulate the need for consistent routine disclosure practices across institutions. That the threshold for frivolous and/or vasticious actions be reviewed and taken into consideration the community and available resources in which it is applied. That threshold for frivolous or, and/or vasticious also consider the anonymity of requesters, their abuse nature and language in request and ensure protection from harassment as provided for the Occupational Health and Safety Act. That the application and scalability of these be designed to ensure taxpayers are protected from persons abusing the, the access to information processes. That administrative practices implied or required under the act, including those of the I P C, be reviewed and monitored. Monitor, oh my goodness. It's the second. Modernized, that the integrity of the act be maintained to protect personal privacy and transparent government. Be it further resolved that this resolution be forwarded to the Honorable Khalid Rashid, Minister of Public and Business Service Delivery, the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, the Royal Ontario Municipal Association, with a copy to the municipality of South Huron and the municipality of Chatham-Kent. And I do note that those three organizations are shortened with their abbreviation. Any comment on that motion? Councillor Drago Stefanik, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I love item number five and number six. I just, usually I don't love things like this, but that is, that is, I think a small municipality is more so valuable in a large city. In a large city, you're a nonless employee. No one knows city of Toronto who the public force person is, the correct person. I think this is crucial and of course good. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, councillor. Okay, if there's some more further comments or discussion on the motion, I put that to a vote. Those in favor? And that is carried, none opposed. Item number 10.5 is the Accessibility Standards Canada Draft Accessibility Standard on Employment. And I believe, Eileen, you'd like to speak to this?
Yes, I just wanted to let council know that they can give feedback on this draft version till October 17th. And I believe it's 11:59 PM, should they choose to.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to correspondence information only, if I can get a mover and a seconder, please? Moved by councillor Ted Scheneman, second by councillor Belinda Kistemaker. Be it resolved that the council, the corporation, the township of Horn Pain does hereby acknowledge receipt of the correspondence information only package attached to the agenda of the regular meeting of council held on Wednesday, August 16th, 2023. And I'll hand off the floor first, Eileen. I think you have a few items you'd like to speak to in this information only package.
Yes, so I wanted to bring attention to item 11.2 first, which is the delegation packages for the A M O conference this, in a few weeks, or in a week. And then 11.3 is Aqua's response to a few of council's questions from the decloration, decloration presentation, which I believe was, I think, in the latter June meeting. And then if I can bring attention to 11.5, these are, there's our initial letter to Indigenous Services Canada and then a response from them. And just please note that the first link will be shared with Horn Pain First Nation as well. 11.8 is just a presentation from Dr. Verma. Mayor Ford might have something additional to add to that, but I just wanted council to know that that presentation's on here. And lastly, 11.10, Bonhom for 2024 has a date change. And that is it.
Okay, thank you, Eileen. Any further comments from council? Anything you'd like to highlight in there? Okay, I've got a few that I'd like to highlight. I just want to say well done to staff for the A M O delegation packages. Councillor Peter Kistemaker, Eileen and myself met today and went through the packages to equip them to be ready for the delegations. I'm confident that they will do well. And I'm looking forward to hearing how the delegations go. And I was excited that we did get an actual delegation with the ministries, both ministries, with the ministers. But this is our first time meeting with the Ministry of Infrastructure, Minister Kinga Sirma. So I send my wishes to the ministers and especially to Kinga. I wish I could meet her in person. So, and back to my original statements, really well-done job on the packages. And I, I also wanted just to applaud us being able to see them on an agenda before they go. I think that adds weight that all of council has reviewed and seen them and accepted them and acknowledged receipt of them before we present. And item 11.3, I just want to note that some of the questions that we asked in that discussion with Aqua have not been answered. They will be coming back, so keep that, that email, that, the declaration presentation, the response, keep that at hand for a further discussion when we get further answers. 11.6 was the Town of Hurst 100th Anniversary Festivities. So I was, you do recall back before COVID hit that council had committed me to going to that festival. And I was able to participate in the council's community dinner. So all of council was there and their spouses, and they barbecued for the entirety of the town. And it was a great celebration. I have to say, every event that I had got to take that afternoon, they had a presentation at the Heritage Festival. They unveiled a huge mural that was done by their arena. And it's, and I, and I put it out there, our 100th is coming sooner. It'll be here before we know it. And it's good to look at these documents and have them at hand of what they've done. So I applaud Hurst on the celebrations and kudos to them for celebrating. Oh, I want to highlight 11.7 actually first, sorry. We do have a vacancy on the Algoa District School Board with the unfortunate, unfortunate passing of Mr. Reed, who was our longtime representative on the Algoa District School Board. He was on the school board back, and I'm going to date myself here, but 27 years ago, when I was a school board trustee for the Algoa District School Area Board. And that was the first time I had met him. So I just, it's unfortunate that he's not with us anymore, but this is why this vacancy has come about for our area. So I do want to highlight it to the community. This would be a great opportunity for a community member, even a young community member. When I served on the board, I was 20 to 23 when I first served. So it's, it's a great learning experience too. And it gives us a direct link for our Algoa District School Board. And I would like to highlight 11.8. That's the Dr. Verma presentation. So you can look at the presentation. Dr. Verma is an excellent presenter and she has a heart for Northern Ontario. And she wants to see this Northern School of Medicine succeed. And she would like to see more placement of doctors within Northern Ontario. But she did have an ask that we advocate and promote and that for the, for the school. And I will be meeting with her again. So we will probably have further discussion in the future of how Horn Pain can support the Northern School of Medicine. I did meet with our C A O of our hospital, Heather Jeremy-Burube. We had a discussion further about that. And talking about what does it take to bring back the student doctors and that sort of thing to our hospital? Because if we can get them to come here to learn, they possibly might fall in love with our community and come to stay. And, and we've seen this time and time again with the long-term doctors that we've always been able to attract, which is hats off to the hospital and to our community for that. And the last thing I want to note at for Horn Pain is 11.11. So the Ministry of Energy has put out an Ontario's Growth Plan for the, powering Ontario's growth, a plan for Ontario's clean energy. It's the documents there in your agenda package, and I've been reading through it. And why is this important to Horn Pain? It's important to Horn Pain because we have a cogeneration plant. I, you know, council, that we all support this cogeneration plant in the Horn Pain lumber mill. It offers significant jobs to our community. And there is areas of this plan that fit within our planning and that fit to prosper Horn Pain. And this is, it goes, I believe, it goes right to 2050. So this isn't a short plan. And I'm sorry, I was reading it today. I believe it's from 2030 to 2050. So we, we want to make sure that Horn Pain's in that plan into the future and that we're growing alongside it. And if this is where the province is going, then we want to make sure that we're building our resources and all of our living documents to include that. So I encourage you all to take a look at that. And that's the only comments I have. So with that, go ahead, Eileen?
I just wanted to also mention, sorry, I forgot to mention this. For the Ministry of Infrastructure delegation package, the time was changed and we, everything in the package is essentially the same. It's just the time's different now. We're now meeting with Minister Sirma on the Tuesday at 8:20. I believe it is 8:20 to 8:40. But otherwise, the delegation package is exactly the same.
Okay, thank you for that, Eileen. Okay, so no other further comments or questions on the information only package? I put that motion to a vote of acknowledging receipt. Those in favor? And that is carried, none opposed. Okay, we're moving on to item number 12, Committee Board Updates. If I can get a mover and a seconder, please? Moved by councillor Belinda Kistemaker, second by councillor Drago Stefanik. Be it resolved that council does hereby acknowledge receipt of mayor's meetings June and July 2023 as prepared by Mayor Cheryl Ford. I do want to comment to this. I do apologize. I thought I had submitted June meetings, but June was a crazy month. And apparently I hadn't, and I'm glad I caught it. If there's any questions or comments on that? Okay, there being none, I put that to a vote. Those in favor? And that's carried. Okay, moving on to 12.2 is the Horn Pain Public Library Board Meetings, June 5th of 2023. If I can get a mover and a seconder, please? Moved by councillor Belinda Kistemaker, second by councillor Ted Scheneman. Be it resolved that the council, the corporation, the township of Horn Pain does hereby acknowledge receipt of the minutes from the Horn Pain Public Library Meeting held, sorry, Library Board Meeting held on June 5th, 2023. Any comments or questions on those minutes? The only thing I, I noticed on the minutes was that they were successful in obtaining a mini grant again this year. And I'm not exactly sure what that mini grant is for, but I'm always happy to see funds coming into our community that the tax rate pair is not paying for, so. If there's no further questions or comments, I'll put those minutes to a vote. Those in favor? And that is carried, none opposed. Okay, item number, uh, twelve point three is the Hornpain Housing Corporation Annual Report and twenty twenty-two draft financial statements. So first of all, I would like to speak to this, that, um, we will be bringing the reports back to our September sixth meeting because the Hornpain Housing Corporation did, uh, pass those draft documents. So they are passed that they're at our housing corporation. We have yet to receive the watermarks removed from, uh, BDO. So once those are received, they'll, and if they are already, they'll be forwarded to the staff to be included. So if I can get a mover and a seconder, please. Moved by Counselor Drago Stefanik, second by Counselor Belinda Kistemaker. Be it resolved that the council, the corporation, the township of Hornpain does hereby acknowledge receipt, acknowledge receipt of the annual report and the twenty twenty-two draft financial statements from the Hornpain Housing Corporation. Is there any further questions or comments on that report? Okay, there being none. Do we, um, Eileen, would you like to defer this so we can change the resolution so it doesn't state staff or, uh, draft? Or do we want to, um, uh, pass this and then pass another one? It's, it's completely up to you.
I think it would be best to defer it.
Defer?
If that's agreeable to council, yes.
Yep, that's, that's fine. I think, Counselor, are you in agreement with that? We'll defer this motion then bring it back, um, so that the, uh, watermarks are off and it won't be the draft. It'll be the actual report. Or, or financial statements. Okay, I'm seeing no opposition to that, so I put that, uh, that, uh, to defer to our next meeting. Those in favor? And that is carried, deferred, or sorry, not carried, deferred. Okay, the next is, uh, twelve point four is the Hornpain Housing Corporation Accelerator Fund Action Plan. And if I can get a mover and a seconder, and then we'll open up the floor for discussion. Moved by Counselor Ted Scheneman, second by Counselor Peter Kistemaker. Whereas council passed Resolution Number twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty at the regular meeting of council on July, or June twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, and Resolution Number twenty twenty-three, two sixty-three at the regular meeting on July twelfth, twenty twenty-three in support of the Hornpain Housing Corporation's application to the Housing Accelerator Fund half for the National Housing Strategy. And whereas the Township of Hornpain completed a housing needs and demand study in September twenty nineteen, which illustrated the substantial need to increase and diversify housing ops, options within the community. And whereas the HHC has provided council with their action plan, which has twenty-two initiatives to increase and diversify housing in the community. Therefore, be it resolved that the council, the corporation, the township of Hornpain does hereby support the Hornpain Housing Corporation's action plan for the National Housing Strategy Housing Accelerator Fund. Be it further resolved that council does hereby direct staff to plan to update the housing needs and demand study every five years in order to ensure that it remains accurate and to measure the success of the Municipal Services Corporation. So that's the, uh, resolution on the ta- or the motion on the table right now. Um, I do want to speak to the report quickly before I open up floor for discussion. Sorry, I had to scroll back down. First of all, on the, uh, motion that sits on the floor now, I want to thank staff for including the two times that we already came to council and talked about this at council and kept council updated. I think that supports the application overall. In the, um, housing action plan outline for the strategy, when we go to the twenty-two initiative targets for Hornpain Housing Action Plan, so the action plan only needs seven, or five for a small community or, uh, of our size, we only need five. What we did here was we took out the ones that we think could be applicable to Hornpain or ones that were already, um, satisfied by, like, we have one that's in here that talks about incorporating a, a climate, um, adaptability plan into the official community plan. We already have that. That's already done. So that's not an initiative to work for, but we can put that in the application saying it's completed and then it ups our marks in the application process. Um, the ones that currently are looking at are number, as the actual five of the ones we want to hit are number one, which is allowing the missing middle. Implementing the incentive and cost fees is number two. The, uh, number three is the accessory dwelling unit. So that's our, uh, garden suites. And in this report, we called them nanny suites. They should be, uh, called garden suites. And I want to thank Eileen and this, uh, EDO for pointing that out. And, um, and then item number five is promoting the infill developments with increased housing density and variety of unit types. This is, so all of these twenty-two initiatives are exa- are word for word out of the accelerator fund package initiatives. Like we copied and pasted these, this is their wording. But item number five, almost all of these, um, mimic what's already in our official plan. Like, we were reviewing this again today and putting in the, doing the, um, application and promoting infill developments. That is right in our official plan. And some of these are right out of our needs and demand study as well. So, um, when we go down to, uh, some points to consider for the municipality is there is option to allow for, um, and this is up to council if they want to include this in the plan is, uh, for, this would be an example, is if we were to look at creating a fire department. Now, this is three years out, right? So it's not that something has to be created tomorrow. But this would be an example. If we want to use a municipal office space and say create a fire department, we could actually put units on top of the fire department. They are promoting that. They're promoting mixed-use, um, municipal buildings and residential. Another item would be is if we were to look at a new municipal office, say, a new municipal office alongside a fire department with units on that building, and then we can transform the current building into units. So those are items that we can include now in the plan and we can adjust, uh, it doesn't have to be finalized of what they are, but it is an opportunity. I didn't want to leave it out for the municipality if they would like to participate or have the option to participate. And I do want to, uh, point out in the last, um, part of this action plan that I, I put down here that the municipality submits the application with the HHC. We got the clarification of that today, that it's the HHC that submits the entire, uh, application and submission for the HHC with support of the municipality. And that was my mistake. And that's why you see these other asks. You see the reoccurring, uh, review date for the Hornpain Housing Needs and Demand Study. That ups the points of our, um, application. If we don't have a renewal date, um, we actually will probably not be successful, I would think, because it's one of the main requirements. But with thus renewing our current plan in a five-year strategy, that would put us into twenty twenty-four, I believe, as a renewal or the end of twenty twenty-four. And that would be perfect for the application, for the housing, um, application. So with that, I open up the floor for any discussions or comments, or if you want any questions answered about the actual application, I can answer those as well. And Eileen, too, I open up the floor for, uh, staff if they have any questions or. Counselor Drago Stefanik, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Not to repeat what you said, by luck, all the aspects of the report, I think it makes a lot of sense for a community, the size of community, and expansion, and, uh, people that are involved in this report. Job well done. Thank you.
Thank you. Eileen, go ahead.
Um, Mayor Fort, could you just clarify which five again? Was it one, two, three, five, and, or was it one to five that you're submitting?
Yeah, one to five are the ones that we're, that we're actively working towards, but we are going to submit. We're allowed to submit more. So the ones that, um, we've already implemented, we definitely are going to submit those. We haven't gone through them all to scour all of our documents, but, um, I know the climate that's in there, uh, promoting and allowing, um, item number fourteen, promoting and allowing more housing types for service vulnerable populations. That was the one we used in conjunction with the senior living complex. Um, the inclusionary zoning, no, sorry, that's not, yeah, I think that, I think that one is already in our planning. Where we encourage affordability, where we encourage affordability units to be built on new builds. And some of them were, if, if they're there, if council would like to move forward with them, right? Like, they're not, I just don't want you to think we're submitting twenty-two or not. We'll probably keep it to ten. We'll do our five main with, uh, the extra fourteen, because it promotes, uh, we saw that today when we were filling it out, that that one fit, uh, the best for the senior housing. And then, um, and then looking at the, the items that we've already completed. Does that answer your question, Eileen?
Uh, yes, I believe it does.
Okay, go ahead.
I just was, I'm gonna ask if the EO can speak through, through me.
Yes, of course. Go ahead.
So I have a few questions. So the, the targets for the action plan, um, I'm wondering if you're gonna submit ten or even twenty-two. I think we're gonna have to put, um, so, C number two says, implement incentives. So if we im- implement those incentives, we would have to probably create a C, uh, affordable, um, CIP to give those incentives. Like, there, there would be things that would have to be done to, to just give those. We couldn't just give incentives. So I'm wondering if, if maybe, I, I understand that these were copied and pasted, but for us to say that we could do all these twenty-two or even ten, they would be, we would have to reopen our official plan and zoning bylaw. We'd have to go back to include some of these things. And there would be bylaws and probably, um, affordable CIP that council would have to consider to do, implement some of these twenty-two things. So I'm wondering if we can use the target, but say, council will look into or, because th- these changes would go to the official plan of the township of Hornpain.
Um, can I, can I just interject there to give clarity? So item number two, implant, implementing incentive, cost or fee structures. Okay, so that would be, that is in the action plan of an incentive. So an example would be is that, um, uh, and, and we're not working outside of the parameters of our current official plan, which is completely updated. So the incentive program that will be created under the action plan will include, for example, something like this. Hornpain Housing has their tiny hu- uh, tiny homes community development. They are looking like you can see in the plan to bulk buy. So the, there'll be a limited number of these, of these, uh, units that people in the town could buy. And then the Hornpain Housing Corporation would offer the incentive that if they're buying it, they will get, um, help with insisting they can apply to get their water and sewer connected to their unit. So this is all done in their own residential property that's already allowed in our official plan. So we, and then we would get the building permits or the resident in this case would get the building permits to ensure that they could do the installation of the tiny home. And then they would apply to the HHC for that incentive, uh, to, for that unit. So it's not an incentive that's, um, outside of the CIP. And that's in, we were writing that in today, that all of the incentives would mesh with our current official plan and the upcoming CIP. That it would, they would be incentives that would make what's already there happen. And then those, that it all gets run through the HHC. It's the HHC's project and their, their incentive plan for the people that are purchasing. Or even another example would be if someone, there will be allowable units if someone wants to, say, transform their garage into a secondary dwelling. So in that case, they apply for the building permit and then they apply to the HHC because they, they've done their, they have, this is part of the planning process too, is that they have to have building permits to be able to apply for the incentive for what they're doing. Like, if you're not doing anything to your property, you're not putting an, an additional unit on it, well, you can't apply for the incentives through the HHC. They go hand in hand. That, clarify that number two? I can't see Stacy.
Even if the HHC is administering them, we would have to have a policy for the Planning Act to have those incentives, so, because it's still under the township. So we would have to include those incentives in, in probably, um, an affordable housing community improvement plan. Because the incentives would still be under the township. So for the Planning Act, even though, like, if you're offering incentives or discounts, they would, we'd have to have a policy for that.
So what did you call that, Stacy?
An affordable housing community. So basically, we could have, um, like, you can have a section in your community improvement plan, but right now, a lot of municipalities are doing a, an affordable housing community improvement plan, which would encompass all these incentives. So if you're having tax incentives or water incentives or, or promoting things that are in our official plan and zoning bylaw, we want to do any, any incentives or reductions or tax incentives, they would have to be spelled in the, in our affordable housing community improvement plan.
Okay, so we were calling, yeah, that helps because we can include that title because that's the funding. When you look at the funding breakdown, the, um, oh, I got the wrong mouse here. The, um, complete action plan that we're calling it, a hundred and seventy thousand, that's laid out to build out all those incentives that we can hire consultants. And then the support staff is for two assistants over the course of the entire three-year project. So there is, um, areas to build that out. So we can put that right in the application that that's the, that's the actual plan name that we're doing. So that, because I would, like, I don't want to go outside anything that we've already created. We just want to create another avenue and bridge it together. So for the Affordable Housing Community Improvement Plan, can that be a standalone public consultation and be passed? And is there a timeline on that?
It's the same process as a community improvement. It would have to be done by municipality and we'd have to go through the MMAH again.
Okay, could not the municipality designate that to the HHC?
I don't think we can under the Planning Act, no.
What was that? Sorry, I didn't hear the answer?
Pardon me?
I didn't hear the answer.
No, I don't think we need to delegate that. We could ask, um, our advisor if the HHC could do, uh, an affordable CIP, but it's, uh, it's for municipalities. So with these incentives, it's not that, I'm not, I'm not saying that, um, we can't do them, but some of them, uh, they're extensive work, uh, like, if we could change the wording to say that council will look into or review, um, possible changes too, instead of putting implement, because we could have to reopen our official plan and zoning bylaw to do something.
But if we're building it so that we don't have to open the official plan and zoning bylaw, like, that's the goal. Is that whatever, like, I'm not understanding if, um, a private contractor wants to put, uh, a house, a second dwelling unit on their property, so a resident wants to do that, and the HHC has a program that allows the sewer and the HHC has a program that allows the sewer lines to be put in, how does that? Like, why can't we do that? I don't understand why we can't do that.
Because you're under the municipality, so we're offering an incentive, but we don't have a policy for it.
Okay. Sorry, go ahead.
So in the in our CIP, we have those incentives and we, so we're, it's not bonusing or we're allowed to offer incentives under the Act under specific, under section twenty-eight. We have to spell them out and they have to be in line with the planning policy statement and our official plan and zoning by law. So I'm not saying that these aren't. I'm just saying we don't have time tonight to look at all these things and say that we're going to implement all these changes because the background is pretty extensive. Because most of them have changes either to the zoning by law or to the official plan or it's a new policy or it's a new bylaw.
Okay, I don't understand why you're saying there'd be changes to the policies to our current official plan or zoning by law or community improvement plan when we're looking at trying to incorporate it without changes.
Yeah, well, I I could be totally wrong. I I don't think I am, but I don't think that the an arms-like corporation of the make changes to our land use policies or offer incentives under the Planning Act. I think that it would have to be done through us, which means we would have to either open our existing policy to make the changes in the twenty-two incentives or we'd have to do public consultation and do a affordable housing community improvement plan to offer those incentives. So once we have the policy, maybe we can get the HHC to administer them, but we would have to have the policy okay by the ministry to offer the incentives.
Well, I'm at a loss how to continue here. Go ahead, Counselor Stefanik, go ahead.
Yeah, Mayor, to the EO, I think the simple solution to this is sort of wasting whatever one we have is the EO could find out from the advisor. Simple question, the question we're asking, you asking her right now, that's advisor, needs to be either yes or no. And what's the path to take? I think that's the solution, instead of going around circles that would seem me. That would be my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Stefanik. Go ahead. I think the EO wanted to speak, or Eileen, sorry, is your end?
I could be totally wrong, but I mean, we can pose the question, but we have only two days, right? Like this needs to be submitted by the eighteen and you know, our planner, the advisor, like, I'm not sure we would get an answer by the eighteen. And yeah, it is a bit more complex. They, you know, they might need more information, so there is time, a time crunch as well. We can definitely pose a question, just whether we'll get a response in time.
Counselor Stefanik, go ahead.
Yeah, Mayor, to the EO, I think this is a kind of right question. Advisor should know this. It's not, I'm sure it's the first question for first municipality regarding the issue. I'm sure the other municipalities are roughly in the same condition as well. So I think they're, if they're well versed in that area, I don't think they'll take massive amount of searching on that. I'm assuming that could be a really quick turnaround time to answer, like in twenty-four hours. That would be my thought.
Well, I'm wondering if I'm wondering if we take the incentives, like with number two, like we don't want to do anything, the housing corp doesn't want to alter anything that we've already created. But if we were successful, we could take those dollars and the township then could create the community housing improvement plan? So that it all fits together and then we administer it?
I'm not sure, like, we would have to ask. Like, I I think we would have to do the CIP as a township, and I think we we'd have to look in to see if we could administer. Like, I haven't actually done a affordable housing yet. But I mean, if we took the any ones that we think are going to implement change, if you're only using five instead of the twenty-two.
Yeah, we're gonna be, we're going to Sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
We're using the first five and fourteen for sure. And then the other ones that we want to include are the ones that are already done for our community. Like the number thirteen is already finished, like it's already incorporated. We don't have to incorporate it into our plan.
So there's six, six on this list that are completely in line with the official plan. That doesn't change any other policy.
Which ones are those?
Um, number three, five, fourteen, fifteen, seventeen. And twenty-two, I'm not sure if it is totally done. I'd have to ask the treasurer.
For twenty-two, if it's not?
Oh, we haven't done it yet.
Okay, so twenty-two. So just so I can make sure I wrote those down correctly, it's three, five, four?
Fourteen.
Oh, fourteen, fifteen, seventeen? Was that what you had said? Sorry.
Yeah.
Three, five, fourteen, fifteen, and seventeen.
Uh, and number one, sorry.
And number one, okay. And we don't have accessory dwelling units, uh, numbers, oh, yeah, three, you have it on there, sorry. Three.
So we have mixed use development in number four. We just don't have it connected to municipal government building. Like, we have mixed, enabled mixed use development in in the downtown on C one and C two sections of the town. We just don't have it connected with local government.
Okay, so then we'll take four out of there. And that was only on posed to question if council wanted any of that to happen. That's why we put it there. Item number five, yes, that definitely fits. Okay, so item number two is important because that was the item that we wanted to spend the money on. That's our initial planning process? But we might be able to fit it into one of the other.
Well, you can put the plan in to do the to do the action plan, and that might include the municipality doing an affordable housing CIP.
Yeah, that's what I I had asked that earlier. And then if it's allowable, if we can, like, to take it off the staff, the township staff, because we'll have the staff for the whole action plan. If we're able to implement it, we will. And if we can't, we can't.
Yeah, we would, yeah. So I would just say the word implementing the incentives, like doing the planning to potentially implement the incentives, because we're not sure until we do the plan if we can actually do it.
Right, so really, though, we could, uh, with the staff at the MSC that will be hired to implement this entire action plan, can they not be utilized under contract to the township for those certain areas that could possibly, if the township has to implement those areas? Did I say that right?
The CIP has to be, we can't do that. As even a township staff, that's a consulting thing. That's a planner who does, would do that document.
Oh, yeah, I know the document. I'm talking about the implementation of the document, the implementation of the incentives in the document. If that can't be delegated to the HHC, are, is there an avenue that the staff may know of now that we could possibly share that employee, one of the employees, so that we're not taxing staff further at the township where they come in and do the implementation part of any of the community housing plan that we can't delegate to the HHC? Would we be able to?
We have to ask the ministry about the community improvement, CIP, but you could build that into your action plan at the C, our HHC to see if that's possible. So whoever's doing your report will look at the laws.
Okay. Okay, so we're gonna add item two then. Okay, so what we're looking at then is one, two, three, five, fourteen, fifteen, and seventeen. And they're already, except for item number two, all of those things are already talked about and included in our official plan.
Yeah.
Okay. So if we don't have item number four, then council, I apologize, but we're not building on top of your municipal buildings next time. Sorry, I'm just kind of down right now. We gotta apply and it's like, we gotta make sure we get the money. Okay, and then the other asks that we have, so there's been a couple of, we're looking at the Spruce Street and then the Front Street property from the Parkview Apartments to the Three Bears. Those, so we already asked about the Spruce Street properties, but just to give council a heads up is that we're looking at possibly a senior development on that Front Street portion. The other area that we might be able to build into the plan is that we've asked to try and get dollars for the demolition of the mall structure that needs to come down. And we could possibly build in there as well. Because we don't have to identify the actual land. We just have to say that the the council's supportive of land and we have enough land available, but that might be one of the areas too for the redevelopment of the mall area. And just to note for council, we are using that definition out of the Housing Needs and Demand Study. As you can see, we don't have our own, but that's how it was created with. And we're gonna continue with that definition. If council wants, we can, I, we could bring back a recommendation to council for a new definition, but I think we should just stand with that one moving forward now. Is there any further questions, Eileen, from staff that we want to ensure we cover?
Uh, there's a question from the deputy clerk.
Yes.
For the resolution, are we changing the number of twenty-two initiatives?
Yes, if we could, if we could change and if we could outline and actually put the initiatives, the actual, what they are in our resolution.
Um, yes, but it would have to be reread in that way for it to be an initiative.
So I'd reread it and include, read those initiatives out?
The way that you want it to be in there, yes, and then I would amend it to be that way.
Okay.
So we could just say, which has the following initiatives to increase and diversify, and then name more?
Yeah, there's seven, there's seven there, the seven initiatives. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. I just want to make sure that's one, two, three, five, fourteen, fifteen, and seventeen.
Right, so, one, two, three, five, fourteen, fifteen, seventeen.
Okay, we don't have, I'm just seeing now that we didn't list thirteen. And that's already in our plan too.
We don't have a full climate adaptive plan. Like, we're building that right now with PHU. We don't have a full plan. We have some considerations in the OP, but we don't have a full plan. We're building that with our planning unit currently.
Okay. So it becomes its own separate plan?
Yeah.
Okay, so will that be completed? When will that be completed?
We don't have an estimated time. Like, we just kind of are in the first, like, the the beginning of just discussions at this point.
Okay. Okay, then we'll stick with those seven. Any further discussion from council? Eileen, go ahead.
Sorry, I just wanted to also, this is more so towards the deputy clerk and also towards council, but in the second, well, in the therefore be it resolved, it should be changed or if council's agreeable to changing it, supporting not the Horn Pain Housing Corporation HHCs, but scratching that out and supporting the seven initiatives and in the, or I guess supporting the seven initiatives in the Horn Pain Housing Corporation's HHC's action plan. Does that make sense?
Or do we just want to put the third whereas, we change it to seven initiatives? To increase and diversify housing stock and then list the seven initiatives? And not touch the second, the the therefore be it resolved?
It should be more specific. I'm also not the greatest resolution writer, so.
But if we're specifically listing the seven at the the whereas just ahead, it's like, I'm not sure what, why we have to say it again in the next paragraph.
Yeah, I'll get the deputy clerk to address that.
Okay.
So I recently learned this, technically, the whereas is aren't like they don't mean anything, like they're more so for background information. Uh, nothing is essentially declared by council until you get to a be it resolved. So the whereas is are just the background information for that be it resolved. So for council to declare it, it would be good to have the specificity within that therefore be it resolved so that it's showing not just the background information, like it's it's showing specificity of what we or what.
Okay. Okay, thank you for the clarification. Yeah, that makes sense. So can we, so we can put in the first whereas it's seven initiatives, take it from twenty-two to seven, and then therefore be resolved that the council, the corporation, the township of Horn Pain does hereby support the seven initiatives, list the seven initiatives or the Horn Pain Housing Corp, or the support the seven initiatives, which are these seven of the Horn Pain Housing Corporation's action plan? Does that make sense? Eileen, go ahead.
Sorry, no, I think I think what Jen meant was we say for the whereas, the HHC has provided council with their action plan, which has seven initiatives to increase housing in the community, community, and then you list the seven initiatives there. And then the therefore be resolved that the council of corporation, of the township of Horn Pain does hereby support the Horn Pain Housing Corporation HHC's seven initiatives in the act Horn Pain Housing Corporation HHC's act on seven initiatives. I don't know.
The seven initiatives within the Horn Pain Housing Corporation's action plan for the National Housing Strategy, as an accelerator fund, because also with this, in the therefore be it resolved, we have the, we're naming the action plan, so that'll be connected to it. So when we have the action plan with the seven initiatives, it'll be
So, okay, so I'm putting names. So, okay, so I'm putting the inclusion between HHCs on the therefore be resolved, the seven initiatives within the action plan, that's what I'm putting in there, right? When I read it out?
Yeah, so what I have so far is does hereby support the seven initiatives within the Hornbein Housing Corporation's action, HHC.
Okay, so it's before Hornbein, does hereby support the seven initiatives within Hornbein Housing Corporation's action plan, right?
Yeah.
Okay, here we go. Okay. Let's see if we can do this. Okay, so I, can I get the mover in a second or again, Eileen, who moved that second it? And are they preview to these changes we're making?
Sorry, it was councillor Ted Chenman and councillor Peter Kistemaker.
Okay, councillors, are you okay for the motion and seconded to revise the motion? As per discussed, and I'll read it out, are you okay to move it and second it again?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So, sorry, who moved it? Councillor Peter Kistemaker?
No.
Okay, good, okay. So moved by councillor Ted Chenman, seconded by councillor Peter Kistemaker. Whereas the council, whereas council passed resolution number twenty-two-three dash twenty-twenty at the regular meeting on June first, twenty-twenty-three, and resolution number twenty-two-three two sixty-three at the regular meeting on July twelfth, twenty-twenty-three, in support of the Hornbein Housing Corporation HHC's application to the Accelerator Fund half for the National Housing Strategy. And whereas the township of Hornbein completed a Housing Needs and Demand Study in September twenty-nineteen, which illustrates the substantial need to increase and diversify housing options within the community, and whereas the HHC has provided council with their action plan, which has seven initiatives to increase and diversify housing in the community. One, allowing increased housing density, bracket, increased number of units and number of stories, bracket, on a single lot, including promoting missing middle housing forms, typical buildings less than four stories. Two, implementing incentives, comma, costing and/or fee structures for, comma, for example, density bonusing to encourage such things as affordable housing and convert conversions from non-residential to residential. Three, accessory dwelling units, a smaller unit on the same property as a primary unit. Four, promoting infill developments, bracket, adding new units to existing communities, comma, with increased housing density and a variety of unit types, comma, example duplexes or secondary units, bracket. Five, promoting and allowing more housing types that serve vulnerable populations. Six, promoting regulated multi-tenant housing forms, bracket, example boarding houses or single-room occupancy, bracket. And finally, seven, is encouraging alternative forms of housing construction such as modular housing, manufactured housing, and prefabricated housing. Therefore, therefore be it resolved that the council of the corporation, the township of Hornbein does hereby support the seven initiatives within the Hornbein Housing Corporation's HHC's action plan for the National Housing Strategy Housing Accelerator Fund. Be it further resolved that council does hereby direct staff to plan to update the Housing Needs and Demand Study every five years in order to ensure that it remains accurate and to measure the success of the Municipal Service Corporation. And I put that up to a comment and I seek comment through you, CAO, to the deputy clerk, did we get that right?
Yep, we did, yes.
We did?
You did, yes.
Any further discussion from council on that motion before I put it to a vote? Those in favor? That is carried, unopposed. Thank you for all the direction staff and the good questions. Okay, we're going to, after twelve point five, we will take a short break. So item twelve point five is council committee updates, and I'll go around the board in the order I see you. Councillor Peter Kistemaker, go ahead.
The only thing I got to report is, Eileen and I are leaving Friday or Saturday to head down for the A-MO and I will have a report written up for our next meeting, I will run.
Okay, right on, good luck. Councillor Ted Chenman?
Nothing to report at this time, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Drago Stefanik?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yesterday, late afternoon, I had a virtual in-camera special meeting with PHU. Upcoming meetings, library board and the PHU is at regular meetings. And I also completed the online health survey, access to health services in Northern Eastern Ontario. I encourage everybody to fill it out, I mean, one reason, I show personal interest, number two, I'm on the PHU board. I think if everybody has a time, it took about twelve minutes. So we encourage people to, if you have a moment, to do, to fill it out. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Stefanik, and I think that was decimated, Eileen, through an email to all of council already, that survey? Yes. Okay, councillor Belinda Kistemaker, go ahead.
I don't have anything right now, thank you.
Okay, thank you, councillor. So I also did the online survey, it's complete. And you saw my meetings there for last month and the month before. Just moving forward, I do have a couple more meetings that we'll talk to further in our other business, just about the rural northern immigration pilot. And I'll update council on September sixth about my meeting with Dr. Burma. And, oh, what else is there? And, oh, and then finally, we'll give an update on the sixth, the action plan. Okay, if there's no further questions or updates, I think this is a good time for a break, if we can return council at eight oh five, just under ten minutes. Thank you.
Everything, are we good to go, Eileen?
Yes, yep, we are.
Okay, thank you. So we're on thirteen, new another business, thirteen point one is the twenty twenty-three payment and loop property tax write-off. If I can get a mover and a second or please move by councillor Peter Kiss to make your second by councillor Ted Chenman. Be it resolved at the council, the corporation, the township of Horn Payne, does hereby write off the attached payment and loop property taxes in the amount of sixty-four thousand five hundred and sixty-three dollars and eighty-seven cents for water sewer and landfill operations in our municipality. Any discussion on that motion or questions? There being none, I put it to a vote. Those in favor? And that is carried and unopposed. Item number thirteen point two is the departmental work plans. If I can get a mover in a second or please move by councillor Ted Chenman, second by councillor Belinda Kiss to make her. Be it resolved that the council, the corporation, the township of Horn Payne does hereby acknowledge receipt of the May to December twenty twenty-three departmental work plans as prepared by the senior management team and reviewed and approved by the CAO clerk. And I open the floor for discussion or comment on those departmental work plans. I would like to give a shout out to all the staff for the good work and I know it was a lot to do this twice in one year. I'm not seeing any further discussion or comment on those. Oh, yes, I am. Councillor Drago Stefanic, go ahead.
Yeah, dear mayor, can I have a hard copy, please? And the reason for that is it's kind of challenging. I guess on my age, my computer didn't work well either, but thank you for repairing it. So I will prefer a hard copy. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Stefanic. And can you add hard copies to my file as well, please? Thank you. Okay, if there's no more discussion or question on that, I move to put the motion to a vote. Those in favor? And that is carried and opposed. Okay, item thirteen point three is the rule and northern immigration pilot project, RNF. So as you can see in the short report, I brought this to council twice, given updates about this. I was approached by a current newcomer in our community about their different work permit status and that it doesn't allow for them to have permanent residency in our community. I've had further discussions with Horn Payne, Lumber, Horn Payne Power about that and the number of individuals that could fall into this category. I also reached out to Anthony from the Ivy Group who are instrumental in bringing the newcomers to our community. And I'm waiting to set up the further meetings with the actual RNF officials. But and they have discussed this with our other municipalities in our area that fall under this. So that's Manitouage actually is in with Thunder Bay, but that would be White River, Duberville, Wawa and Chaplo. And there's agreement, soft agreement from the mayors, of course, and we will discuss it at our mayors meeting in September. But I would like to look at the motion tonight. So if I can get a mover and a second or please, and we'll move by councillor Drago Stefanic, second by councillor Ted Chenman. Whereas the rule in northern immigration pilot project, RNF allows newcomers to apply for permanent residency after two full years of employment with any scope of permit and alleviate certain restrictions related to the immigration process. And whereas most of the cities that participate in RNF have widened their catchment area to include smaller municipalities in this program. And whereas the township of Horn Payne is not part of the RNF program. And whereas the inability to participate in the RNF program significantly deters newcomers from settling within. And whereas the Sioux State Marie RNF catchment area may be expanded to include the townships of Horn Payne, Chaplo, Duberville, White River and the municipality of Wawa. Therefore, be it resolved that the council, the corporation, the township of Horn Payne does request that the city of Sioux State Marie expand their catchment area to include the townships of Horn Payne, Chaplo, Duberville, White River and the municipality of Wawa. Be it further resolved that this resolution be forwarded to the honorable Sean Fraser, Minister of Immigration, Refugees and Citizenship, Citizenship, Carol Hughes, MPP Algonma, Manitou and Kappa Scasing and the city of Sioux State Marie with a copy to the townships of Chaplo, Duberville, White River and the municipality of Wawa. And I want to thank the staff for drafting a thorough resolution. I think it's our motion. I think it captures everything we need. Any further discussion on that? Councillor Stefanic?
Yeah, dear mayor, it makes total sense to me. And I think if they were wise enough, they would put it in their district. I mean, just makes sense. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. If there's no further comments, I put that to a vote. Those in favor? And that is carried and opposed. Okay, item thirteen point four is a draft municipal grants policy. And my understanding, Eileen, is that this will be open for comment for council and it'll come back to a meeting?
Yes, so this is just a draft and will council can review it for over a two week period from August seventeenth, so tomorrow till the thirty-first. And the rest of SMT will also take a take a look at it as well.
Okay.
Sorry, the municipal grants policy has come out of, I don't know, it was during our conversations for Jack Sargent's party and the donation policy that council wanted to see it to for me to look into.
Oh, good, good. We need it for our community. And if it eases what we're doing at council and gives us guidance of who and when and where we give money, I think it's beneficial. And at the September sixth meeting, when it's on the agenda, council will have opportunity to speak to it as well then?
Yeah, we can just put it on. It'll just be another draft. Probably, yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, I just wanted to say probably we'll have to come back a few times maybe. But yeah, we can put the revised draft on there again.
Okay, yeah, because it might spur other comments that council and staff have on it. It might spur others that have further comments once they hear everyone's discussion. Okay, so with that, we'll move on. So council, you'll have until the thirtieth, starting tomorrow, to submit comment through email. Any further discussion on that? Eileen, go ahead.
Sorry, I just have the deputy clerk who wants to make a comment through the CAO.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to point out on page four, the last page, there is a blank spot that I left for council and staff to provide input. So organizations may be provided an annual maximum of blank in funding and they only have a maximum one request per year. So I was just hoping that council and staff could think about what they would like as that maximum number.
Okay, and then with that follow-up question, thank you for pointing that out, Jen, is if we can know the donation amounts that we've annually given, so that we have a guiding area, maybe three years back, if that's sufficient, council, would that be sufficient for you for the last three? Or do you want to do the last term of council? The the four years? Councillor Stefanic, go ahead.
Four years, last term.
Okay, yeah, we'll look at a full term. Thank you for that. Is there any other comments now that the staff would like to highlight just to ensure that council looks over those portions closely?
Hard going, please.
I don't, we don't have any further areas to highlight now.
Okay, great. Okay, then moving on. And there's no motion to pass with that tonight. So we'll be discussing that again on September the sixth, council? Okay, moving on to bylaws. Item number fourteen is fourteen point one. So that's our comprehensive user fees and service change charges. And when I was reading through this, because it's brand new again, it's incorporating the changes we made to this seasonal passes, correct?
Yes.
That's the only changes that are in this document?
I'm going to ask the treasurer speak to to this bylaw specifically.
Okay, great.
It is the only changes in the schedule and the other, the previous bylaw had rescinded a whole bunch of other bylaws, so I've taken that out. But I just noticed at in the bylaw at bullet twenty-five at the end, this bylaw shall come into force and shall take effect of effective August sixteenth. That should be July twenty-fourth.
Yes, that's correct. Yes, good catch.
I can't even remember the exact date. Okay.
Okay, and then we can still, it's still a first and second reading on the sixteenth and the sixteenth of today, right? With that, with those changes that we we put the changes into effect. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, if there's no other changes, any other comments or questions on that bylaw? Okay, there being none? Okay, I'm gonna need a mover and a second or please move by councillor Ted Chenman, second by councillor Belinda Kiss to make her. Be it resolved that bylaw number twenty nineteen being a bylaw to establish comprehensive user fees and service charges, be hereby read a first and second time, be considered read third time and finally passed. Those in favor? And that is carried and opposed. Okay, item number fourteen point two is a bylaw number twenty twenty, the use of municipal technology resources. And I'm gonna actually, I should read the red the motion first so that we can actually have open discussion. Okay, moved by councillor Drago Stefanic, second by councillor Peter Kiss to make her. Be it resolved that bylaw number twenty twenty being a bylaw to establish the use of municipal technology resources policy for the township of Horn Payne, be hereby read a first and second time and considered read a third time and finally passed? Okay, any discussion on the bylaw? Okay, I do have, I do have a note, just because this does change the use of all of municipal councils technology. I think it would be fair to have the effective date sometime in the near future to give council to ensure that their technology is all in line with this bylaw. Is that permissible to the staff? Go ahead, Eileen.
I believe that we needed to pass this in order for, I'm gonna get the deputy clerk to confirm, but we needed to pass it tonight in order for the use of the cell phone for the mayor use.
Okay, that's fine. I don't need to have the cell phone till September the sixth. If we pass it then.
Okay.
I'm okay with that. It's just in the, we haven't, this is a brand new bylaw, right? We we're not updating a bylaw. This is a brand new technology bylaw. Okay, and
Yes, it's brand new.
Yeah, so when I was reading through the bylaw, it states in there, council, that like certain apps, I'll give you an example on your iPad. If you have the Netflix app, you would need to get permission to put that on your iPad or and and if anything you put on your iPad needs to be taken off your iPad. So that's why I'm saying that if there's anything that that isn't in line with the current bylaw, it gives council time to get all of their devices in line. And just, and can we, are we able to pass it with a date that we don't have to, like, we could pass it with a full effect date of like seven days from now? Could we not do that?
Yep. Yes, we could.
Okay, does council, would you like to do that? Just give seven days or to the end of next week?
Seven days and seven nights, okay.
So I'm not sure exactly, do we put that on, I guess it's inclusive on the different pages of the bylaw, because I'm the first to establish the bylaw. The readings would stay the same, but it would come into, shall take effect upon passage if it says, so shall take effect upon a date instead?
Yes, I would just change it. Shall, I forgot the exact wording. It's in the, yeah, that's, um, effective. Shall come into force and shall take effects. And then the date. So if you wanted a week from today, that would be August twenty-third.
Okay, well, why don't we just move it to the end of next week on Friday? Whatever that date is.
Twenty-fifth.
The twenty-fifth, okay. Council, are you in agreement with that, that the we pass the bylaw and it comes into full effect on the twenty-fifth? Okay, is there anything, is there anything within the bylaw that you see could be cumbersome? Go ahead, councillor Stefanic?
Yeah, I can get my, I can get my, just a quick question in front of me. My computer is dying of slow death. What I do use the computer as, you know, yourself, mayor, I read various newspapers. And that's how I send you my plenty from the Daily Press on North Bay. So I'm not sure if that's included, but that's what I do. When I'm up before thirty in the morning, I read the newspapers, North Bay Two Star. If I see anything, as you know, or message you, the policy, that's what I use it for. I know that for that. I'm not sure that covers that in there, but that that's showing exactly what I'm doing. That is the only thing that.
Are you using that underneath your browser, underneath your Safari browser? Is that where you're looking? Or do you have downloaded apps of news apps?
No, no, it's not. No, it's just news media, news clips come up and then I go to the Daily Press and just comes up and I go on everywhere. So it's not, it's not even an app. It's just part of the computer.
Yeah, I I think that's permissible under the bylaw. I'll get clarification from the staff, but if you read it, and it sounds like that's permissible?
So specifically under section five point two point one point nine, it says ensure proper usage of the internet such as networking, researching and other tasks specifically related to councils. That includes looking at relevant news.
Yeah, that's what I'm sure. With the CAO, the library, for example, I look at the different things. And it's so quick, instead of following her, it's just, as you know, you saw me a few times, I sent it to you as well. And it's quick, instead of going to my computer, go back to the municipal. So just wanted to clarify on that. Thank you.
If I could.
Yeah, for sure. Jen?
So this is not any of you from doing anything related to council committee municipality. It's more so just making it known that you can't use it for personal or unethical or illegal uses, basically.
Just public.
And once it does come into effect, we will also have, if you see appendix A and B, there's just, I'll have you sign to say what technology you have. And I'll keep a little list of who has what so that we can track that.
Okay, definitely. Great idea. And then when we, in that appendix B, we should be keeping the serial numbers and everything as well with them, with the technology? Or do we have that information elsewhere?
I don't believe we need to note the serial, like, just to, I
Okay, sure, yeah. The deputy include this, okay, there you go.
Okay.
The deputy clerk will include the serial numbers in there.
Okay, perfect. And I do have a question about the cell phone with, is there anything in the bylaw, I tried to find it, for using location? I would like to use location when I have my cell phone is because I'll be, I would put the location on when I'm traveling. I'd want it for safety. I'm just wondering if there's anything in there that would prohibit me from doing that?
No, there is, you'll be able to use that.
Okay. Okay, so just the changes of the date coming full effect next Friday and that date was the twenty-fifth?
Yes.
Okay. And council, everyone's in agreement with that and the bylaw?
Yes.
Okay, and then I put that to a vote. Those in favor? And that is passed and opposed. Great, we don't have to bring it back. Okay, moving on to thirteen or fourteen point three, parking. If I can get a mover and a second or please move by councillor Ted Chenman, second by councillor Peter Kiss to make her. Be it resolved that bylaw number twenty twenty-one being a bylaw to regulate traffic and parking on highways, private property and municipal property within the township of Horn Bay, be can be hereby read a first and second time and be considered read a third time and finally passed? I open the floor for discussion from council on the bylaw. I do have a question about the bylaw. I'm wondering on schedule A, page eleven, why are we taking lane A, B and D and Furman Ave, completely no parking at any time? Why is that happening? Okay, well, I see, I know within the bylaw, it does talk about allowances for commercial vehicles, right? So this covers off, I'm thinking of the home hardware transportation truck that parks every Tuesday on Furman Ave. There's no other place to unload. And the other schedule of lane A, the value mark, fresh mart, I mean, their eighteen-wheelers go in there and sometimes block that. And I just want to ensure that the bylaw covers, we're not causing parking issues.
Sorry, mayor, mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Eileen.
Mayor, for what section is this in the parking bylaw? Schedule A, page eleven. Okay, thank you.
At page eleven, we're talking about the entirety of these laneways with no parking at any time. The Front Street West to Third Ave, it's a two-hour restriction, which is, we've been, we've talked about that a while ago now. But I'm just concerned about the laneways. And do we need to have public consultation if we're taking out parking that's been allowed in the past by our residents? Eileen, go ahead.
If I can ask that the deputy clerk speak through me?
So this actually has not been changed. This is the same since, yeah, at least twenty nineteen.
The only thing that has actually been changed is there three point ten, the parking and no parking. The only thing that has actually been changed is there, three point ten, the parking and no parking zone. All we did was add the no person shall park a vehicle or commercial motor vehicle. That was, that was the only thing that was added, because that now includes trucks and trailers and all that, which can't be parking on Becker Road. So this parking bylaw is back on here so that we can put the signs up on Becker Road, the no parking signs.
Okay, so to, sorry, which, what was the addition?
It's on page, it was on page ten, but it's three point ten.
Three point, there is no three point ten.
Oh, sorry, it's now, okay, I gotta, that was on the old one. It is J. It is two, under two point three, parking and stopping, and it's J. Which is page five.
Okay, so we had that addition. So on that previous bylaw, when was that passed, the parking bylaw? The previous one? Did I just write that in the resolution? Does it rescind it?
I believe so. The one that was just passed was done when the conference of user fees were passed, because all of the parking fees were put into conference of user fees, and this one was updated. And that was the end of last year?
I thought it was the beginning of this year, yeah. Yeah, it was the beginning of this year. It was only a few months ago.
Okay, so should we be rescinding that other bylaw?
Oh, yes, I did, I did miss updating that, so I will change that to two thousand and two.
So, go ahead, Counselor Kistemaker. Peter?
And just for clarification on the diagram that we're looking at. It says Front Street West, but if you look at where it's highlighted, it's highlighted right to the end of, to the old path sack in front of the CN buildings. That's not included, or it is included? Because if you, it says two hour parking restriction, but it's from Third Ave to Fourth Ave, but that's not what's actually shown on the diagram, so just clarification.
Oh, yeah, I see what you're saying. So we need to update that. Okay, I just, my question was to ensure that we did have public consultation on this part. Because we did, did we not do public consultation for Becker Road? No?
No, don't believe so. No, I don't think we need public consultation for this.
Okay. Sorry, what was that?
I think we had discussion, what discussion, we did the, we passed the initial. First by law in twenty nineteen.
Okay. Okay, well, it's something, I think it's something that we're gonna have to look at and update as we fix our roads. Is, reading through it, I don't know if it's gonna necessarily work for our community into the future, but it's nothing that needs to be done tomorrow. So with that update, counsel, are you any further questions? So we're gonna move forward with Becker Road improvements. Okay, I'm gonna put that bylaw to a vote. Those in favor? And that is carried and opposed. Okay, moving on. We are at item fifteen, no motions or notice of motion. Item sixteen, a closed session. If I can get a mover and a seconder, please. Move by counselor, Belinda Kistemaker, second by counselor, Peter Kistemaker. View resolved that the next portion of the meeting at eight thirty-three PM be closed to the public in order to discuss a position, plan, procedure, criteria, or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality or local board. A trade secret or scientific, technical, commercial, financial, or labor relations information supplied in confidence to the municipality or local board, which, if disclosed, could reasonably be expected to prejudice significantly the competitive position or interfere significantly with the contractual or other negotiations of a person or group of persons or organization, and a position, plan, procedure, criteria, or instruction to be applied to any negotiation carried on or to be carried on behalf, on behalf of the municipality or local board. Pursuant to section two thirty-nine, two B I K of the Municipal Act two thousand and one. I just do have a question about this motion to move into closed. Are we missing the personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employee from item six point, sixteen point two?
We certainly are, yeah.
Okay, can we have that included in the motion, please? Perfect. Okay, counsel, you follow that, and that would be section B? And I put that to a motion, those in favor, or those to a vote, those in favor? And that is carried. Okay, so we're moving into a closed session. You have your closed session, or I'll go into the closed session link.
Okay, and we're recording as well?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. If I can get a mover and a second or to return to open, please move by Councilor Peter Kistemaker, second by Councilor Ted Gentiman. Be it resolved that the Council of the Corporation of Township of Hornpan does hereby return to open council at 9:44 PM. Those in favor? And that is carried. During our closed sessions, we just, during our closed session for those watching or will watch, we did discuss four items. One was staffing with nothing to disclose at this time. Service agreement and we're still in negotiations. Or sorry, that was an update. No further matters at this time. Environmental issues, an update. No further matters to be discussed at this time. Service proposals, negotiations. We will continue looking into this. Adjournment. If I can get a mover and a second or for the confirmatory, please. Move by Councilor Dragos Tefanik, second by Councilor Belinda Kistemaker. Be it resolved that bylaw number 2022 being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at the regular meeting held on Wednesday, August 16th, 2023. Be hereby read a first and second time, be considered read a third time and finally passed. Those in favor? And that is carried. And finally, adjournment. Move by Councilor Peter Kistemaker, second by Councilor Belinda Kistemaker. Be it resolved that council does hereby adjourn this regular meeting of council held on Wednesday, August 16th, 2023 at 9:45 PM. Those in favor? And that is carried. None opposed.
I would agree with you.
Okay, thank you, councils. Have a good night, everyone.
Good night, madam. Good evening.